A council member reveals his plans for the future. The man behind the city's Heritage Month celebrations bids farewell to City Hall and the Day of the Horse. These stories in City Beat. Councilman Bill Rosendahl, who is undergoing chemotherapy for cancer of his pelvic area, has announced he will not be running for a third term. Rosendahl represents the city's 11th district, which includes Venice, Brentwood, and Westchester. Rosendahl plans to stay in office through June, when his term ends. In a written statement sent to his constituents, Rosendahl says he is determined to beat the cancer and return to public affairs broadcasting on television or radio. Jacob Motta, Mayor Antonio Viegas's Director of Neighborhood Community Services, is leaving his post, and he got a proper send-off in council chambers. Motta is known to most as the man behind the city's various Heritage Month celebrations.
He completed an all-time high of 35 cultural heritage months, produced 84 individual Heritage Month events, including the opening ceremonies, closing ceremonies, creative writing, and poster contests. He added the American Indian and LGBT Heritage Months to the existing Latino, African-American, and API Heritage Months.
This is far more than I ever could have imagined. I mean, I always tell people, I'm a kid from Boise, Idaho, and so I am honored to stand before this council. Thank you.
Motta will be taking up a new job with Kaiser Permanente. Residents who live in the city's various equestrian communities joined Councilmember Richard Alarcon in council chambers in Van Nuys to celebrate the Day of the Horse. Many of the city's equestrian communities, including Silmar, Sunland Tahunga, and Shadow Hills, are in Alarcon's district. The councilman says a lot has been and still needs to be done to help the city's equestrian community thrive.
We also provided $100,000 to maintain horse trails, and Melanie Cotto, who's right over here, matched that with $50,000 because our horse trails need tremendous improvement.
The councilman also honored the legacy of five of the city's equestrians who have passed away. An area known to have a gang problem is making sure the community's kids have a safer, smarter alternative to a life on the streets. The city's annual Salute to Kids event makes certain that kids know they matter.
Three, two, one.
Even Ronald McDonald got in on the act at the annual Salute to Kids event. The event began with a unity walk that made its way through surrounding neighborhoods before ending at the Lanark Park Community Recreation Center in Canoga Park. Kids held up signs proclaiming, "We are the future. We're worth it."
This is one of the areas where we have a gang injunction in place. So it's an area where there is some gang activity, and these kids are challenged as they grow older to join these gangs. And we need, as a community, to come out and show them that there's another way.
The marchers were escorted by members of the Topanga Community Police Station, which hosted the event with Councilman Dennis Zine's office, the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, and other offices and community groups.
You guys can come together in a positive way and learn to be kids, drug-free, having fun, staying in school, all the good things that parents want for their kids.
Once at the park, a fair, complete with food, music, a kid's karate demonstration, and face painting. Families also received free information ranging from city services for kids, to child safety tips, to how to address the problem of bullying.
Often, the people that know how to fight don't often have need to fight. That there's a lot that goes into projecting yourself with self-confidence, good posture, good presentation, that you don't find yourself in martial situations.
Kids picked up freebies from t-shirts to balloon animals, but they also learned that the community cares about them and their future.
They just want to be good stuff for me and for the community.
A salute to kids that begins with the march and ends with families and the community making a commitment to a safer and healthier future for the next generation. An antique car show and parade honoring public safety officers recently rolled into action. Anita Bennett takes us to the annual 10-4 Day in Hollywood.
With music from the 1970s TV show Chips and some hot wheels from crime dramas including Kit, the talking trans Ammon Knight Rider, a car show and parade honoring public safety officers kicked off at the L.A. Fire Department Museum in Hollywood.
This is 10-4 Day, October 4th, but we celebrate traffic safety, we celebrate television and movie, police shows. Larry Wilcox is here from Chips.
One out of 12, one out of 12. See the man, two of them are in progress, handle code two.
Then the parade snaked its way up the street to the world-famous Walk of Fame.
Everybody loves this. All the cars, people come out, they have a lot of fun, we get great support from everybody.
The tourists got a kick out of the old police cars and meeting someone who played a highway patrol officer on TV.
Well, here he is. He's been, had his picture taken with a lot of fans from Chips. Ladies and gentlemen, let's hear it for Larry Wilcox.
On behalf of Roger Crawford, and of course, the CHP and the California Highway Patrol and 1199 Fund, and all the policemen that have given their lives in the line of duty, God bless them, have a great day.
It was also a chance for a local beauty queen and a costume catwoman to say thanks to L.A.'s public safety officers. Along Hollywood Boulevard, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. This Week.
In this week's list of things to do and exhibit honoring the dead, a choral extravaganza at the Disney Concert Hall, and all about planting and growing tea roses. If you love roses and gardening, then join Gloria Lenbach, President of the South Coast Rose Society, as she educates attendees at the Banning Museum on how to select, grow, and plant tea roses successfully in Southern California gardens. The free lecture takes place Saturday, October 20th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Banning Museum, located at 401 East M Street in Wilmington. The museum's Howard Rose Garden is a bloom with 12 historic tea roses that you won't want to miss. Light refreshments will be served. To RSVP, call 310-548-2005. The website is thebanningmuseum.org. It's a celebration for departed loved ones, otherwise known as Dia de los Muertos, the Day of the Dead. Celebrations will kick off next week, but the art exhibit Sacred Memories Honoring the Dead Across Cultures will be on display at the Pico House, starting Friday, October 19th, and will continue through mid-November. The Pico House is located at 424 North Main Street at the El Pueblo Historical Monument downtown, across from the Union Station. Call 213-485-8437 for more information. The Los Angeles Master Corral opens its 49th season on Sunday, October 21st, at 7:00 p.m. at the Walt Disney Concert Hall, with an organ and choral extravaganza led by music director Grant Gershon. Welsh composer Paul Meiler will participate in a pre-concert talk to discuss the wedding anthem he composed for Prince William and Kate Middleton's royal wedding, an anthem heard by 2.5 billion people around the world. The Los Angeles Children's Chorus will cap off the evening with a post-concert gala performance. The Walt Disney Concert Hall is located at 111 South Grand Avenue downtown. For ticket information, go to lamc.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The act of play may seem, well, like child's play, but one little boy proves it's much more. He turned his love for arcade games into a thriving business that's getting worldwide attention, and he built it using the only things he had: scraps and cardboard boxes, and a whole lot of imagination. Gil Reyes takes us to Kane's Arcade.
Business is booming on a Saturday afternoon. Kids spend their tokens playing miniature soccer and other fun titles you might find at the local Chuck E. Cheese. One difference, though: these games are not electronic. But who needs Xbox when you have a cardboard box?
Hi. Welcome to the arcade.
Welcome to Kane's Arcade, the brainchild of 10-year-old Kane Munroy. He took cardboard, yarn, and other scraps from his dad's struggling auto parts store and turned them into an electric-free arcade, setting up shop in dad's workspace.
Little by little, he just started making different games and more games, and they started getting more complicated. And then he met a guy who made a short film about it, and since then, the film has gotten viral and turned Kane into a worldwide celebrity.
The short film titled Kane's Arcade has received millions of hits since its online release last year. Money to help Kane began pouring in from all over the world.
Kane has now raised over $218,000 in donations to go to solid.
The film documents his determination, something L.A. City leaders respected.
He was there for a year, building on his little dream, and nobody came. And that didn't matter. He kept on building his dream, and that's, I think, what we celebrate as well.
He went back to the basics about what's possible, and it shows that you do the best with what you have. That is a strong message to give everyone in life.
Just believe in yourself.
Smart advice in the game of life. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The mayor and councilman Weezer were at Kane's Arcade to help celebrate the Imagination Foundation's Global Day of Play. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. You can catch us also online at lacityview.org, or follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Sergeants, sergeants, if you'd please call the members and have them report to the council chambers. I do want to thank Mr. Englander, Garcetti, Coretts, and a big thank you to Mr. Cardenas for beating the president to today's meeting. But if you would please call the members, have them report to the council chambers, and as soon as you can, give me their ETAs. Again, a big thank you to Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Coretts. Members, I mean sergeants, please call the members. And to the members of the Purple Heart Foundation, when we begin... So I'll give you your cue. You, I didn't mean you guys and ladies. I've been corrected. Good morning. It is... Good morning. It is Tuesday, October 16th. I want to welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council, your Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. You can come, just watch your council work, or you can come if you need to share your views. So, with that said, Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Busciano, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Coretts, Kocorion, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Zine moves, Parks seconds, next.
Committory resolutions for approval.
Coretts moves, Weezer seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, I'm gonna ask that we all rise and have the military order of the Purple Heart Foundation. We will have them lead us in our flag salute.
Reginald Legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, military order of the Purple Hearts Foundation. Madam Clerk, before we get into the presentation portion of today's council meeting, let us go through the agenda. Let us start off with the first three items.
Items one through three are public convenience or necessity items, no's for public hearing. A motion is required for item number one.
Mr. Weezer?
Hold on to the desk for a motion.
Okay, we'll hold item one. Any cards?
No cards.
Members, any specials? Okay, we'll hold item one, but let's prepare to vote on the other items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Item four is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, specials, members, specials. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, now we'll move to the next item, which is items five through 14, I believe, Madam Clerk, and we'll hold number 10. Do we have cards?
Cards on items eight, 10, and 12.
Okay, specials, members? Yes, Mr. Coretts?
I need to call 14 special.
14, call it special for Mr. Coretts. Any other specials? Okay, then let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, the next item, or can we go to the supplemental?
Yes, on the supplemental agenda, item 15 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, items 15, members, any specials? Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item?
Item 16 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection, that item is before us. Are there any cards?
No cards.
Members, any specials on item 16? Okay, it doesn't appear to be, so let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, at this point in time, I think that would bring us back to presentations or the various items on the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Labange, why don't we welcome you in the military order of the Purple Hearts Foundation to the center aisle?
Mr. Garcetti to join with me, and let's ask if our good friend Bill Rosendahl was here, we'd have him join us, as well as veterans, Mr. Garcetti being active. These are some of the greatest people of our community, Mr. President, and thank you for letting us honor them on this day, Mr. President. It's so impressive that today, Los Angeles is saluting the injured and fallen veterans for being one of California's first city to be designated a Purple Heart City. By proclaiming Los Angeles as a Purple Heart City, it officially honors the service and sacrifice.
Mr. Labange, let me stop you for a minute. Let's, give us the opportunity to show them the respect they deserve. Let us make sure that the flag is into...
Posted, posted. Everybody come...
This presentation.
Good job, good to see you. How many we see out there? Good to see you, we're good.
Mr. Labange, I return the floor to you.
As in Hollywood, they say take two, I'm taking two, because these guys took two for the country. They went and served us well throughout the world. And Los Angeles, on this day, is being honored as one of the first California cities to be designated a Purple Heart City. By proclaiming this city as a Purple Heart City, it officially honors the service and sacrifice of those bidden women in uniform who served us, who were wounded or killed while serving their country. The Purple Heart is awarded to members of the armed forces who, by an instrument of war in the hands of an enemy, have been wounded or died in service. These are true, great American heroes. The military order of the Purple Heart was formed in 1932 for the protection and mutual interest of all those who received that declaration. Our veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and their communities, by placing themselves in harm's ways for the good of all. The contributions and sacrifices of these bidden women from the city of Los Angeles and throughout our great nation is vital to maintaining the freedom by ways in which life is enjoyed by our citizens. So today, on this day, we do salute all those in the armed forces, and we resolve, by this city council, proclaiming the city of Los Angeles a Purple Heart City, and honor the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform. And every Veterans' Day, which is the 11th day of November, every Memorial Day, many of us gather out at Forest Lawn, at the Hall of Liberty, where we salute the veterans. And it's so special that we have them here today. Don LaFort here comes every year, every year for the last 10 years plus that I have been here. And at last memorial, he said to me and his beautiful wife, he said, "Can we do something by proclaiming this city a Purple Heart City?" And this is his, he's the guy who led us over the hill on this. He's the guy who said, "We should do this, Los Angeles," so we're here today for that moment. Before I ask him and some other veterans to say some remarks, I'm gonna call on Eric Garcetti, who is now an active in our reserve in the United States Armed Forces, U.S. Navy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and thank you so much, Don, and to all the members who are here commemorating this. You know, Los Angeles, in not just this war or these wars, but in our previous wars as well, has given so much to this country. You can see plaques here at City Hall, you can go to Alvera Street in Mr. Weezer's district, and at La Placita, see folks who have sometimes paid the ultimate price. But here in Los Angeles, in the last decade, the global war on terror, on Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom, Los Angeles has given more veterans to this effort than anybody, and has endured more wounded and killed than any other city in the United States, including New York City. Here in Los Angeles, we are proud to serve. It is one of the reasons my grandfather, an immigrant from Mexico, became a citizen in this country for his service in World War II. The Second World War, the Korean War, Vietnam Conflict, the many conflicts... The Second World War, the Korean War, Vietnam Conflict, the many conflicts that we had in between then and the First Gulf War, the First Gulf War, and then Global War on Terror, we have seen so many brave men and women who have been injured, wounded, and sometimes paid the ultimate price. I'm reminded of one, Joselito Villanueva, who was the brother of a friend of mine who worked in our office, George Villanueva, a brave soldier, who in the opening days of the Iraq conflict, this one was shot by a sniper and killed, and posthumously awarded, among other things, a Purple Heart. So I thank each one of you for your sacrifices, for what you have given, for my shipmates, and from Marines and Airmen and Airwomen, the soldiers that are overseas right now, you're in our thoughts. We hope you come home safe without a Purple Heart, but know that if you are wounded, we are here for you, and this city is ready to embrace you now as a Purple Heart City. Thank you, and God bless.
Mr. Garcetti, thank you, and members, before we do, I just gotta... So you know how special your name, your branch, and where you served.
I've served... My name is Luis Madrid. I served with the United States Paratroopers in Vietnam.
Good job.
Jesus Saskival, Afghanistan, 2006-07.
William Montero, Iraq, 2004.
Vietnam, '66, '67, '69.
Your name?
Milton Taylor.
Milton, thank you.
Gary Doc, Rutledge, I was a medic in the U.S. Army, Vietnam, '68.
David Jackson, U.S. Army Ranger, Vietnam, Panama Grenada.
Jim Anderson, Vietnam, Navy.
Walter Martin, Army Special Forces, Vietnam, about three years, quite a few places, and Laos.
Robert Martin, U.S. M.C., Vietnam.
Alex Pringle, United States Marines, Vietnam.
Henry Stern, U.S. Army, Vietnam, '69.
My name is Richard Yisai, Vietnam, '65, '66.
Ray McCormick, U.S. Marine Corps, '68, '65, '66, I did two tours.
John Cavney, 75th Rangers, Vietnam, '69, '70, '71, '72.
Alejandro Rodriguez, U.S. M.C., 2003, 2005.
Larry Rodriguez, Korean veteran, 30th Division.
Don, turn around, turn around, Don.
I'm gonna turn around, you don't even look at me anymore.
You can look right there, tell the council where you served.
I would say, I served in the Marine Corps, and I served out in the Pacific, where I saw combat on Saipan, Tinian, and Okinawa, and after the war ended, I thought I was gonna be coming home, but they wanted the 2nd Marine Division over in Japan, so I had to go over to Nagasaki, where the 2nd atomic bomb was dropped. So that's where I finished up my duty in the Marine Corps before coming home.
One of the greatest generation, and all the great ones that are here, and I might add, the former honorary mayor of Hollywood, Johnny Grant, always wanted to, and did when we had the first welcome back from the Kuwait War, to welcome back the Vietnam veterans. Let's give all our veterans a big hand right now, Mr. Weston, very special. And also, listen, we're the largest city in the country that's recognized this Purple Heart recognition, and more to do as we recognize those who have served this country so well.
And Mr. Labange, to all of the Military Order of the Purple Hearts Foundation, I want to thank you for your service to the greatest country. Because of you, we are the greatest country. But there are several other members that would like to say a few words, Mr. Labange, and I'd like to start with Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just looking up about the Purple Heart, 1917, that was when they first issued the Purple Heart, and those of you veterans who received that Purple Heart, and we have the wounded warriors that are coming back from combat that are receiving the Purple Heart, and those are true heroes within the true tradition of sacrifice for the great freedom that we enjoy, and I want to congratulate all of you, those of you who've been through the Vietnam, the other conflicts, the soldiers that went to Saipan, I mean, so many years ago, but we haven't forgotten, and your memory continues, and the fact that you are here today shows respect that the people of Los Angeles have for all of the military personnel, and our colleague, Eric Garcetti, who served in the United States Navy, and Eric, I forget that title, I keep on giving you the wrong title.
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant. I always keep saying, "The 2nd Lieutenant," Lieutenant, United States Navy. But with that endeavor to keep our freedom, we know we have world terrorism, but you folks are the pioneers that have made it happen, and the Purple Heart given by the President of the United States, and it's a true tribute to your sacrifice, your dedication to keep the freedoms that we all have here. Congratulations to all of you, and happy, happy time, because you deserve everything that the American people can bestow upon you for the sacrifice you made to the freedoms that we have. God bless you and all your families, and thank you for being here today.
Mr. Englander.
I... I'm really touched for this presentation. In June of 1944, on the beaches of Normandy, my great uncle Abe Englander was severely injured with a... When three bombs went off, the first, the first three that went off, when he was there, he was only there a couple of days, and suffered, and had surgeries his entire life. And he received his Purple Heart 64 years later, in June of 2008, and died two months after that. That was his greatest moment in his life, and I was with him right before he passed away. In fact, there's a, there's a great video that ABC did interviewing him, you remember? And that was my uncle Abe Englander, who, all he wanted in life was to be recognized. He was grateful for his grandchildren, he was grateful for giving him the opportunity to live a normal life after he came back and, and had to go through all the surgeries, but he really wanted to be recognized for serving this country, and continuously fought to receive his Purple Heart and didn't want to die without it. That's what it meant to him. He wanted to be recognized, remembered, and buried with it. And it was one of the most touching moments in my family's life, where we got to sit with him when he received that Purple Heart, and what it meant. And so, I can't thank you all enough for everything you've done, and all of the men and women out there in our Armed Forces, particularly those with the Purple Heart. You have a tremendous heart, and you have a heart of gold. So God bless you, and thank you very much for serving this country and everything that you've done.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Labange, for bringing these fine gentlemen into these chambers today. You know, I have the utmost respect for any man or woman who puts on a military uniform and is willing to put their lives on the line for our country, and it's a great honor today, especially for me and all of us here today in the city of Los Angeles, to have you in our chambers who have received the Purple Heart and gone beyond the call of duty to serve our country. For myself, someone who was born in Mexico and became a naturalized citizen of this country, I often say that I'm very proud of my roots, proud of my country, part of where I come from, but there's nothing like this country has given so much opportunity to everyone, so much freedom, and it's people like you who have allowed us to live in the best country in this world by living with those freedoms and liberty. Thank you so much. It is a deep honor for me to be here in your presence today, and this is a great tribute to be one of the most important ones we could have here in the city of Los Angeles. Our hearts go out to you, and not only to you, but to your families as well. Congratulations for this day.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to say a few words to these fine gentlemen here. I was a... I had the honor of being with the members of the 442nd on Saturday evening, and they are some of the greatest men this country has ever known, and I was fortunate to spend the last 11 years working very closely with them, because for me, it was personal. My father and all of his brothers are World War II veterans. My uncle William was a recipient of a Congressional Medal of Honor. My nephew has done three tours, tours of duty, Afghanistan, Fallujah, and Basra. So I understand the depth and breadth of what you've done for our country, and you're head and shoulders above the rest. And you, and to your families, the sacrifices that you have made on behalf of all of us should never be forgotten, and should always be remembered, and celebrated, and talked about for generations. Thank you very much.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. What an honor it is to welcome all of you into our chambers today. And Don, in particular, I just wanted to let you know that my father served with you on Okinawa. My father was a member of the 6th Marine Division, fought with you on Okinawa, and then went from there on to Qingdao, and participated in the occupation of China. And thank God, my father came home without wounds, but as I grew up, I certainly learned that everybody who has ever been in combat for our country comes home a different person than they were before that experience. And I think it's, it's clearly true that every person, every man and woman who puts on the uniform of our country makes a great sacrifice for all of us, and so do their families. And whether they serve in combat or not, they're making a sacrifice for our, our country, a big sacrifice. But no one makes a bigger sacrifice than those who wear the Purple Heart, those who have been... Lost a part of themselves to the battlefield. And so, for that, we are forever grateful, exceptionally grateful for your sacrifice. We'll always remember your service. But I think it's important that we do more than remember your service, it's also important that we convert our respect for you and your sacrifices into real action. And at a time where this city has 25% of its homeless population being military veterans, at a time when this country isn't committing itself enough to medical care for our veterans through the VA and otherwise, we should really be ashamed that we're not doing more to, to remember and to help those who have done so much to serve us. So I think it's important that everyone at every level in government recommit themselves to serving you in the same way that you have served us. So thank you for being here, and congratulations on this recognition. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Labange, thank you very much for bringing these, these great Americans before us.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. Just want to stand, and also, I'm very humbled to be standing before you, looking at all the issues you've addressed, defending our country. I need to share with you that I too have family, an uncle who was in the Korean, they called the conflict, for him, it was a war. I have cousins who are Vietnam veterans. But on every Veterans' Day, in a small neighborhood called Cypress Park, on Division, on Pepper and Cypress, we have representatives from each war, and these are local soldiers, local veterans, and they stand there, and we acknowledge the great sacrifice. But for me, what's more profound is that the youngsters in the neighborhoods who find themselves in very violent places in the gang culture, for that moment in time, they get to see what real sacrifice is about. When you pay the ultimate price for your country, how foolish they are for killing each other over a street name, or other names that have... Make no sense. And when you stand tall the way you do, we're able to show them that there are true values here, we have, we as Americans have fought hard for our rights, and because of your sacrifices, we can stand tall today. I just want to say thank you so much for everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and again, let's give him a great round of applause. Thank you for all that you've done.
And Mr. President, before we conclude, I do want to cite the names of Robert James Cottle, the first LAPD officer who was killed in military service, serving in Afghanistan, Purple Heart awardee, and Joshua Cullens, who was a 2nd officer, both killed on a roadside bomb in Afghanistan in 2010. This is why we do what we do, and members, this was very special. I came from a committee meeting, I wasn't as prepared as I wanted to be, but you see these great men and women who were prepared when they served our city and did such a great job. So on behalf of the mayor, Antonio Virocosse, Don, on behalf of all your veterans, we salute you for Purple Heart City in Los Angeles. Congratulations. Good job, good job. Hoorah! Okay, we get a picture, how about hoorah? Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Alakon?
I just want to thank you for doing this presentation. We don't recognize all those who have been injured in service to our country as much as we recognize those who have perished, and so I want to applaud you for creating this, and I would be remiss if I did not especially give thanks to my son-in-law, Florentino Lopez, who returned from Afghanistan last year, and is a recipient of the Purple Heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, there are no more presentations, so it's my understanding on item one that the amendment has been circulated, so let's vote on item one, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now, Mr. Karretz, we're gonna do item 14, and we have... Now we have one card. Oh, Mr. Karretz?
I just want to say for the record that I'm gonna step out because of my conflict. I live across the street from the location, so I'm too close to vote on it.
My... Yes, I understand. Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, item 14.
No on Measure J, Committee? Anybody but Garcetti for mayor, Committee?
Let's stay on the topic.
No, no, these identification purposes. If you want to arrest me for identification purposes...
Nobody's gonna ever arrest you.
Notice how they don't want... See, notice? I just put the cameras. I can't even say who I am. That's... They start heckling me. Number 14? You... We're in favor of number 14, but you know, maybe you should... This is... Maybe... This isn't relevant. There are no agendas, there have been no agendas, you're not handing out agendas anymore, you're printing one-tenth amount of agendas, you're cutting information, and now how are we supposed to have opinions? And I asked the press, "Go back there and try to get an agenda." See if I'm lying, HollywoodHighlands.org, for shame, City Council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. We can prepare to vote on this item now. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, if we could change the television screens to show what's left on the agenda? Okay, there you go. All righty. With that said, let's... We can go to item eight, maybe? Is that eight or nine? Donna Pearman and John Walsh on item eight.
I'm not sure exactly what entails with this, with the Neighborhood... My name is Donna Pearman. I'm not quite sure what it entails this on the Neighborhood Council. I'm not sure how far you tend to go on this. It seems like the Neighborhood Councils are already doing a job trying to get people on the boards. They probably could use more people on the Neighborhood Councils, more diversity, meaning... And hopefully, they'll do that. So I'm... Don't see... And it's just like you, shut down our video conferencing.
Stay on that item.
So I... So I'd like to... I hope that you're not going to ruin the Neighborhood Council, and that you're not going to change the flavor of what is the people that are on the Neighborhood Councils already. Okay? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, for identification purposes only, 36 years in Hollywood, and chairman of the... Anybody but Garcetti for mayor campaign. This concerns putting in a regulation that would prohibit violent felons and sex offenders from running for positions on Neighborhood Council. And incidentally, I don't think you should even be voting on this, because there are no agendas, apparently, in City Hall. Not now. I am in favor of this, but I think we should expand this, and to the City Council. Let's say, let's have an agenda item enforcing that prohibiting violent felons and sex offenders from running for positions on Neighborhood Councils. And I want a clarification here. Suppose someone is arrested who works on the staff, and is arrested for drunk driving. Under the rules now, can that person, or will that person be able to run for Neighborhood Council, or does the person have to kill somebody while drunk driving? Or does the person have to kill somebody while drunk driving to be prevented from running for city council and enforcing? I think this is very, very important to staffs, because I could sit here all day and tell you about the arrest records of members of the staff. There's only five of you that have a staff that doesn't have an arrest record, five of you. I can name them right now. Krikorian doesn't have one, Weezer doesn't have one, Cardenas doesn't have staff members, and two others, and the rest of you have staff, and some of them are very serious, very serious, and some of them are convictions. That's the garbage you have working for you. HollywoodHighlands.org, go to the website now.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes. Excuse me, 14 ayes.
Okay, now, why don't we move to item 12? Cards? And we do have cards on item 12. Donna Pearman, John Walsh, Mervyn Evans, please come forward.
I'm Donna Pearman, vote for Eric Garcetti for mayor. Anyway, this one who's over here is the one over there extending the tax state credit and filming. Well, it seems like the only ones that you can seem to be concerned about, not the city of Los Angeles, but you seem to be only to be concerned about the tax credits for filming. I mean, these are not the people, the filming industry, we can, are not the ones, everybody depends on for getting things done in the city. So city employees that they should be extending, they should be extending more benefits to and more things to. I don't think that we should be extending the film credits, tax credits for filming. I really don't. I think we can, matter of fact, everywhere I see any place where they want to do filming, they disrupt everything. So I think this is a wrong idea. Vote no on it.
Mr. Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org.
Thank you. John Walsh, okay. People have been filming in Hollywood since, I believe, 1918, somewhere around 1918 with the barn. There's no problem. Tax credits, yes, but what is the root of the problem? Why aren't the film crews shooting in Hollywood? I remember years ago, they were all over, and generally you had very little problem with them. I lived in Hollywood since 1918, very little problem with these people. They're the crazy old white ladies who, you know, but other than the crazy old white ladies who complained, there weren't too many people complaining about filming. The reason they won't come here is because the reputation of Hollywood, the reputation as crime-filled, the reputation of a huge riot that had the whole West Bureau tax squad on the street on Saturday night. And we will be putting something on our website this week about what happened and how that, because that riot was created by Satanists, and I have proof of it. I have a photograph of it.
He's not attending this issue.
And that's the reason why people won't come to Hollywood. That's why they're going elsewhere. That's why they'll go elsewhere. And incidentally, you know, you go to the, over there to my friends, the supervisors, and their DEA doesn't sit there saying you're irrelevant. She sits there, and now he sits there.
Get back on the, get back on the subject. Okay, Mr. Mervyn Evans, come forward.
Mr. Wesson, it's always good to see you. I really enjoyed seeing you on television the other day.
My pleasure.
Film credits for Los Angeles is like butter to toast. We need every single opportunity for every production company in the entire country to come to Los Angeles. I know that you're committed that runaway flight cannot be beneficial for Vancouver over Los Angeles or beneficial to New Mexico over Los Angeles. This measure's long overdue. I strongly encourage you to develop a very positive atmosphere to attract more film production. Film production equals jobs. And California deserves those jobs, Los Angeles deserves those jobs. And one quick conclusion, MervynEvans.com, I welcome everyone to visit the website. I strongly believe that if we increase taxes, that may do more to discourage film production in Los Angeles. Please, take the time to read your election book. It's important. And for those of you who are voting by absentee, you need to be voting now.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Wesson, you're doing a very professional job.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I want to thank Mr. Garcetti for bringing this motion forward. I'm happy to second it. I was the author of the original California film and television production tax incentive when I was a member of the legislature. And there's no question, I think we have all of the evidence we need, that this kind of tax incentive works to save jobs. And the results are in, the $500 million in tax credits that the city, excuse me, the state expended has produced more than that in additional fees and revenues. It has more than paid for itself in revenues to state and local government. But beyond that, it has created tens of thousands of jobs that otherwise would have been going to New Mexico and to Canada and elsewhere. So I strongly support Mr. Garcetti's effort to not only extend the existing tax credit, but to expand the scope of it into other areas where we can cost-effectively produce jobs, bring new business activity into Los Angeles and into California. So I ask for your aye vote.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for your leadership at the state level, and thank you very much for everyone's support on this. We did obviously have a very clarion and strong call for the governor to re-sign the tax credits. Mr. Krikorian helped pioneer, Mr. Fuentes and others worked on, Mr. Calderon, at the state level this year. But we all know that it was insufficient. $100 million, and study after study has shown at least that we get a dollar back into government coffers as a state and local for every dollar we put in. But many dollars more are in the economy when we keep our core industry here, when we have gaffers and grips and the florists and the Peters, and we know the ancillary effects. But I want to highlight something. In here, there's a couple of things we do. We look at commercial production, which also now is not just moving to other places in the United States, but around the world. But also video games, which combined are a bigger industry than all of Hollywood and filming, too, have started to get incentives in Canada, incentives abroad, to bring that same sort of production that happens with video games, often very similar talent is getting tax subsidies in other places, and we could risk losing that as well. The state cannot look at this as subsidies for a few rich people. We've been designed, because of Mr. Krikorian's wisdom and others, to make sure that it is really the below-the-line folks that this hits. And I was very disappointed to read in the Los Angeles Times, an analysis piece, that the legislative analysts in Sacramento still continue to say, we have not done a study. They've given an opinion on studies, but they have not done a study, and all did was cite one, to have a negative take on these tax credits before the governor was either going to sign or veto this. And I was blown away. I mean, imagine being in, reading the Detroit Free Press when the car companies were struggling, and the Detroit Free Press writing an article about, you know, car companies cost too much and they should go under. Or the New York Times writing about the banking industry when they were on their knees, like, let them die off. And essentially, our signature paper, the LA Times was saying, you know, the tone of this article was, these are bad, and of course, we've seen in other states where people do too deep of credits, where there's dumb about them, but these are smart ones, and we cannot lose our signature industry. And I hope as we come later on, my proposal that we have, which is related to this too, to make filming pilots free in this city, and then the first year of being able to film them, to waive our city fees, is a signal we can send with this, to say that we are going to keep and we're going to fight for keeping filming here in Los Angeles. While Mayor Bloomberg might say that New York is going to be the center of filming, I hate to disagree with, mayor I respect, but he is wrong. Los Angeles will stay the center of filming, and we will make sure that happens by making sure we don't just continue those tax credits, but expand them, and maybe one day even lift the cap on it altogether. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Some of you may recall that I submitted a resolution in support of the extension and expansion of the state film tax credit in January 2012, and it was supported unanimously. Now, there's another resolution that I also introduced in August of 2012 in support of tax credit extensions, as well as further providing additional film production incentives to be competitive with other jurisdictions outside of California, but at a level to match incentives provided by any other location outside of California. And just so you'll be aware and be ready, this has been scheduled for Rules Committee for next month, November of this year, and I hope to have the same support that I assume we will have today.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Reyes. Sergeant, Mr. Reyes. Okay, we're going to hold, Mr. Reyes, just tell him we're going to hold that for a second. Madam Clerk, just hold for just a second. We're calling Mr. Reyes, just because he got stepped out the side. Thank you. We know how important it is for production. And Mr. Alacon, please.
Yes. I support all the proposals by all mayor's candidates in this regard. And seriously speaking, the issue of tax credits is one that, is one that California has really ridden a roller coaster on. And the fact of the matter is that tax credits work. The challenge is, however, in the analysis, and we do have to do a better job of analyzing these programs to guarantee that we do get a return on our dollar. Our enterprise-owned credits, for example, you know, many jurisdictions violated that principle by not demonstrating that their enterprise-owned credits actually benefited the long run, and in doing so diminished the support for enterprise-owned credits in Sacramento. I know this because I was the chair of the committee that oversaw the enterprise-owned credits for California, and it was very difficult to expand the number of jurisdictions that could use these. I used them, for example, to develop the General Motors plant and to develop the Price-Fister plant, redevelop the Price-Fister plant. So as soon as Mr. Reyes comes back...
Well, no, we have others on the queue. You inspired others as well.
I'm happy to close my comments, but in any case, we, on the one hand, we do have to have better guarantees and analysis to demonstrate the tax credit programs work. On the other hand, this program does work, and we ought to expand it.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Mr. Garcetti, for a second time. Mr. Reyes passes.
Just the last thing to close on, the analysis, we tried to make sure that we do have more and more analysis. And in the committee, we brought in the Headway Project, which if folks want to check it out, I think it's at theheadwayproject.org or headwayproject.org, which brought in UCLA economists to do a second analysis. There was one that had been done by the MPAA. Some folks questioned, well, if it's being paid for by folks who benefit from this, can it be impartial? Well, I think it was a pretty good study. This was a secondary study done by an independent group that has nobody and no funding from the film industry. And they did say, not only did this bring back enough money to the state coffers, but the economic effect was well worth it. And it talked about the number of jobs and pushed for us to have an expanded tax credit. They asked for $250 million a year. And so for folks who want to look at some of that analysis, it does exist, just because the state legislative analyst office hasn't done it. But check out headwayproject.org, or you can go to our city council's jobs committee webpage, and we have links there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Krikorian, such a great history of helping this area.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for reminding us of the extensive amount of studies that demonstrate the cost-effectiveness of these sorts of incentives to stimulate our heritage industry here, and the impact that has well beyond the industry itself. One of the members of the public commented on, you know, we should be giving help to public employees rather than this industry. And that echoed for me, the same kind of arguments that were made by many in Sacramento against this in the first place, which is why are we subsidizing this industry when we're cutting public employees? Well, here's the truth of the matter. The truth of the matter is that studios aren't the ones that are gaining the benefit from this. It's the small businesses in the San Fernando Valley. It's the, as you mentioned, the grip, the carpenter, the seamstress. But beyond that, it's all of those small businesses that are dependent upon the spending that those people do here in our local economy. So when you, I've spoken to people who clean houses for a living, who say that they have been hurt by runaway production because the clients that they used to have no longer have the disposable income to be able to afford those services. So the ripple effect that we feel throughout our economy is unmistakable. And so while I'm pleased that the governor signed Assemblymember Fuentes's bill to extend the existing tax incentive, it clearly is not enough. The extension was not long enough, and the scope of the incentive is not wide enough. And we need to continue to do more work in both of those regards. So I thank you for bringing this, Ms. Perry, I thank you for the work that you've done in bringing this forward as well, and I think that it's important that we continue to work on this. And I don't know if Mr. Reyes is back yet.
He passed, so we're okay. We're good. We're good.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
And yesterday, Mr. Krikorian, I was at a business in Hollywood, 85 years, they manufacture all the lights, 100% manufactured in Los Angeles, in America, in Hollywood. All this is so important. Keep those jobs here. Thank you. No other speakers on the queue, other than the great representative of the 15th district, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. You know, over the weekend, I had an opportunity to spend some time with Neil McDonough, actor, director, who's appeared on numerous TV shows and films. And he had expressed to me how, as a father of four, it's important for him to stay close to home. And what this, what you have before us will allow him to do just that. And I also have a dear friend, Jeff Jones, who works grips, and oftentimes, he's sent to Canada and the Midwest, and he too misses his kids and family. But on the, that's more on the emotional side, but it's critical that we continue to support this and provide these tax credits to our, the Hollywood industry. Again, as a kid growing up in San Pedro, you, we are home to a number of TV shows and films, and also in Wilmington, where you see these production companies come in, and with the production companies, as Mr. Krikorian alluded to, comes in, helps the local economy with providing services to our downtown Wilmington and downtown San Pedro districts, business districts. So I want to stand and thank Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Krikorian, Ms. Perry for continuing to push this along. And we are Hollywood, we are Los Angeles, we ought to be, we are the entertainment capital of the world. Thank you.
I love the heat with Bobby De Niro there, the St. Vincent Thomas Bridge, all that filming, very important. A rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it and grab the bark. No other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, forthwith on that. At this time, I'm going to call general public comment. Let me have Ronnie Stewart, followed by Connor, followed by Donna Pearman.
Good morning. Hello? Good morning. My public comment has nothing to do, it has to do with myself. I'm a person, I have an issue of noble cause corruption involving the Los Angeles Police Department and LA District Attorney's Office. I'm a person, I was convicted of a crime I didn't commit in 1987, and I just became aware that the Los Angeles Police Department, as well as the LA District Attorney's Office, actually framed me for child molestation. I have a document from LA District Attorney, California Attorney General, and LA Superior Court, saying that what I went to prison for that I didn't do. And I'm seeking compensation from the city of Los Angeles for wrongful conviction.
Thank you. If you need help, go to the side, we'll ask the deputy come and help you. Thank you. Thank you. Donna Pearman.
I want to say, okay, city council is not right taking away Marion Fogler's right to speak. It's almost impossible for her to get down here. The city council is wrong, keep taking away our video conferencings. These buses are horrible. First Orange Line was fully packed, the second had only one seat. So how is that going to accommodate the disabled? The seats are hard, and you have no bathrooms, and you can't go and eat or drink for two hours, the time that comes to get here. It's hard for the disabled, when people with illnesses and the elderly. I want to say Wendy Gruel was not impressive as President Tempore, and she did very little then, so I want to vote for Eric Garcetti for mayor, and I want to have Richard Alacon. Our city should... Our city should not, our union should let the public know how much, the public should know how much the city council is making, what their benefits are, how many hidden perks they receive. The charter should be rewritten that makes the city council, and no politician, they can't, they can't turn these service, city services into political pawns. If we want the city services, we need to cut out the red tape, which is the city council. Cut red tape, not cut out for video conferencing. VICA and Chamber of Commerce is, makes it seem as though it's the employees that's fault. When's the exact top, the big people, the executives, the CEOs and the city council, to what's a fault. Cities should not hurt, city employees should, health benefits should not be changed. You have no right to change the current city employee's health benefits. It's not acceptable. It should have cover the city employee's spouse and children.
Thank you very much. Let's have the next speaker, William Scott Garnwright Jr. Is that correct? Thank you.
My mind is really, I'd like to think...
Please speak to the microphone.
Thank you. I'd like to address the city council, and everyone here, including the clerks. So I'm gonna make it short. I had spoken with Parks, Perry, everybody except Wesson. And it seemed as though they ignored bringing the finances that necessary to help to alleviate the tax burden for the city of Los Angeles and the homeowners and et cetera, and employees. So this includes hiring individuals for this new cooperation that's listed with the United States of America's District Court, and the President of the United States of America, since Ronald Reagan, and et cetera, and Tom Bradley. So it seems as though they do not want to distance the landlord, the land, some of the set zone, including the Federal Reserve Bank, that has to bring the jobs and et cetera. It seems they're not interested. But for the city central, those that live, there will be employment for them. But the rest of the toys, I think I should take it to San Bernardino City. So WISG, W Limited Corporation, let it be said, in the large that I belong to, it seemed they totally ignored it, they didn't sit down personally, they, so it's not, we are non-political. So the finances is already here. So a portion of it goes to the city treasury, I mean, goes to the Federal Reserve Bank and the treasuries. And there is a European individual that's in your district, the San Marco. You understand what I'm saying to you? Okay. You will not be the mayor of the city. That's it.
Okay, Mort Allen, John Walsh, Merv Evans.
Good morning. My name is Mort Allen. Squeeze it.
Mort, I have squeezed it all morning.
Okay. I kind of come here this morning with a heavy heart. I don't know why I'm here, except I feel horrible that I feel like I've destroyed some families. And I just want to tell you that it was my idea about six years ago, that for this city to really be successful, make a lot of money, we needed to have the best law firm in America representing the city. So I went out with a few friends of mine, and we created CULT, C-U-L-T. We put together four of the top attorneys of the state, Bill Carter, Jane Usher, Kurt Livesey, and Carmen Trutanich, and we said we were gonna fix this city. And I convinced them that they should give up. Each one of them was making over a million dollars a year in their law practices, to give it up, make not much more than a garbage truck driver makes, but save the city. And they came in, and they really brought in a law firm. And they changed things, they were cut by 150 attorneys, they did all this, they still survived this. And what has happened is, they had a war. They had a war over the billboards on the Staples Center, because they felt the city should make money. I guess you know, in the sale of, for $10 billion, those billboards that the city gave them are worth $1 billion in value, which the city gave away. They didn't want that. They wanted to see the city make money. Now what's happened is, you have 10,000 police officers, and you have 3,000 workman's comp complaints, and the mayor just chopped all the investigators out of the office, so nobody can investigate those claims, they've got to be paid. And now the PPL has decided to run the attorney that represents all the police officers that sue the city, Mr. Smith, to be the city attorney.
Thank you.
So I think it's sad, because these people are gonna turn around and become the attorney suing the city.
Thank you, Mort. Thank you. But wait a minute, Mort, I think I need to clarify.
Yes.
Based on what I said, it did not come out exactly the way that it, it should have. Mort gave, I don't know if it was all of us, or several of us, a little squeegee thing. And when you squeeze it, it says...
Relax, calm down now, don't stress.
It says, says relax, don't stress, take it easy. So when I said I'd been squeezing it all day, I was talking about...
They only cost 99 cents. I'll get some more out of the car.
This very important gift that you gave us. And Mr. Englander, I bet you've been squeezing that one as well. Okay. Richard doesn't want it. John Walsh and Merv Evans.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, here, wearing for the first time our... This is our Operation 2012 Barack Obama, Secret Agent Obama 2012, made in El Salvador, because the sweatshop conditions to make this shirt, even Mexicans won't tolerate it. They have to go to a totally fascist country like El Salvador. Ladies and gentlemen, I talk to you about the big riot we had. Great work of the LAPD, no one arrested, thousands of dollars stolen, they've dropped the investigation, because it might make Eric Garcetti look bad. Eric Garcetti, go, Google right now. Anybody but Garcetti for mayor. Google it and see the hundreds of entries that appear. Rape, we had another rape in Hollywood. Now, the woman at 6:00 AM in the morning was jogging on Franklin. She was torn, she was raped. She's the 10th woman raped. Look, he's not even listening. Look at him. Look at him. He's not even listening. You don't give a damn about that woman who was raped. I have asked you to talk and announce the rape speech.
Mr. President, he should direct this comment to the council as a whole.
I announced everyone. You were all guilty of the rape of that woman on Saturday morning. Her clothes were turned off, he vomited on her, he spit on her. And I found out about a crime mapping. And where is Eric? She didn't give any money to his campaign. Anybody but Eric Garcetti for mayor, garbage, absolute garbage. And where, he won't even sit down with us, won't even sit down with us, and on Hollywood Boulevard, out of control, out of control Saturday night. And there was Satanist graffiti on the Vine Street Theater, which I have recorded. Satanists for Garcetti. And I'm telling you, go to anybody but Garcetti for mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Merv Evans, followed by George Krikor. George Krikor.
You know, if courage and leadership had another name, it would be Herb Wesson.
I'm loving you, Mr. Evans. I'm giving, I'm giving you 45 minutes to speak.
Please visit Merv Evans Voter Guide dot info. Please take the time to read your book, Please Vote by Mail. I want you to vote by mail. I do not want to wake up day after election day and have a low voter turnout and not have who we love, who we want to be president, a new fellow become president. Now, two things. I believe California's colleges should be free. I am firmly committed to getting the Cal State LA system to carry a minor in gay education. I do not believe that gay education should be taught in elementary and junior high. It's okay in high school with a parental consent. But we need to make the community colleges in this state and our CSU system free within the next 24 months. We have far too many young people who need an education to be competitive. We've got a lot of adults who need to get back on track to be competitive. Let's make our colleges free. Governor Brown, if you want that vote on 30, you need to come out and say the colleges will be free afterwards. Merv Evans Voter Guide, it gives dot info, it gives you my view on these propositions. I'd invite everyone to visit it, take your time to visit it. And Mr. Wesson, I want to thank you for scandal-free management and your council members for scandal-free management and making Los Angeles the best city in the entire country to live in. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. George Krikor of the Make Foundation, George, do we have George here? Going once, going twice, George? Oh, come on.
I am 90 years old, I can't hear good, you know.
Speak into the mic, George.
Every councilman, I got a picture, I want to show on the TV. To TV, I want everybody to watch this. What kind of big market, 46 years, under my pocket until today. I want to see everybody, I don't know how I gonna do. On the TV or that, that. Now I no work for money. I am 90 years old, I don't need the money. I have city hall. From Pico Rivera until Los Angeles Hollywood, West Hollywood, all down my pocket, only five years, I taken food from food bank free, five years. Before five years, from 46, until 2005, all down my pocket, costed lara, lara, lara money, assure is strong, that. Canton City, I give $150, $1,000 in the church, three churches I sponsor. I am a sponsor, mayor office, I am LA best. I want show everybody, I support after-school program. Now I am, I, I want to work, not for money, for me myself, I don't need the money. All money come for foundation, M.A.K. Foundation, I don't finish.
Thank you.
I want to talk, I want to finish.
Thank, thank you, George. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, that concludes general public comment. Mr. Garcetti.
Briefly, and I normally don't respond to public comment, but I think the comments that were made were so revolting by Mr. Walsh, not only have I, for my entire career before I came here, been very involved in the issue of sexual assault, and I'm a counselor, but in Hollywood, we take every single sexual assault incredibly seriously. DNA backlog that we've worked on, our LAPD, our rape treatment center that we work very closely with for counseling, it just, it's rare that I respond, because I think part of the point of Mr. Walsh is to get a reaction. But for anybody who is out there watching, and who has been a survivor of sexual assault or who's watching about what we have in Hollywood, we have an incredibly committed police department and division in Hollywood, and we are taking any incident and always do incredibly seriously. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I think it was very appropriate that you did respond, Mr. Garcetti. I almost did it for you. So again, that concludes general public comment. We will now, Mr. Krikorian. Mr., okay, Mr. Englander.
Items 15 and 8, if I could ask those both forthwith.
Without objection. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Krikorian, can we take up item 10 now? And I just wanted to get a feel from you guys, how you wanted us to move forward on it. I do believe we have 18 to 20 cards.
Yes.
And you want to do a minute?
Let's do the cards first, then we can respond.
A minute? Okay, we'll do the cards first, and then I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Okay. You're the city attorney's view?
The Brown Act issue?
Yeah.
Okay, one minute. Tina Hussein, Kevin Norton, Doug Haynes, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Tina Hussein. I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce and our 1,600 member organizations. The LA Chamber supports policies that allow businesses to advertise their goods and services, grow their companies, and boost our economy. The outdoor advertising industry is essential to our local economy. More than 6,000 small and large businesses depend on the marketing opportunities outdoor marketing agents companies provide, including entertainment, consumer goods manufacturing, retail, and food and service industries. The entertainment industry, a critical part of our economy, relies heavily on outdoor advertising. Billboards bolster the success and bottom line of a given project, which is essential to supporting and creating jobs in LA. The process of establishing a revised outdoor advertising ordinance has gone on for too long, leaving the outdoor advertising industry and the businesses that rely on it to deal with ambiguous regulations and great uncertainty. The Chamber believes it is imperative the city council approve this motion to find a legislative solution that provides the clarity and consistency we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kevin, Doug Haynes, and Timothy Alger, I think it is. Yes, Kevin.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Kevin Norton, Assistant Business Manager with IBW Local 11. I'm here today to support the Krikorian Reyes motion. Our position is based on our interpretation of the following factors. Unlike what anti-billboard interests are saying, there is no backroom deal here. As a matter of fact, as I read this motion, it seems like the city's trying to create a very transparent process here. The motion calls for creation of a working group led by a chief legislative analyst to explore ways to create sensible legislation that will result in public benefits for the city. I think the people are missing the point, that the motion calls for a set of recommendations that may result in a legislative ordinance. That's not settlement agreement. Last time I checked, legislative ordinance is created through a very stringent process that involves public input. This sure does not feel like a backroom deal. My union represents city workers, and I'm a resident of the city myself. And out of this process, there's an opportunity for the city to extract substantial public revenue from the billboard industry and use the funds for public purposes, bring back laid-off workers, improve city services for residents. So I would say the city has a moral obligation to follow through with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. If I could get Timothy, followed by you, Phil, Phil Rec.
Hi, my name's Stokhans, I'm with East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. And I think it's important, what was said by the last speaker about transparency, this came out of nowhere, it's unprecedented and unnecessary, essentially moot the litigation. Our neighborhood council has an opportunity to really look into this, because we don't know anything about it. None of the neighborhood councils have had any opportunity. They have a 30-day period which preclude us, it doesn't go through the city planning commission, there is no report from the city attorney on this, there's no report from planning staff. What I've heard from city staff is that this is something they've never come across before. We need an opportunity as citizens of Los Angeles to participate in this process. And if you do have a working group, that group should include Dennis Hathaway and others who are not part of the interest groups that are trying to push this through. So I hope you'll consider the public's interest in this, and, you know, quite frankly, none of you are listening to what I'm saying. And it's really indicative of what we feel this is going to be all about. Thank you.
Timothy.
Good morning, council members. My name is Timothy Alger. I've been representing Summit Media for the past four years in litigation over the digital sign settlement agreement. I'm sorry, we only have a minute to talk about this, but Judge Green's well-reasoned decision invalidating the settlement agreements is well reasoned, and it's going to be affirmed by the Court of Appeal, and it's going to put the city in the best position to resolve the digital sign problem. The Court of Appeal is going to affirm it, because the agreements were unlawful, and they violate the well-settled rule in California that you can't have private agreements that conflict with the zoning code. But I also want to talk very quickly about the issue of potential liabilities that are raised in this motion. There are no potential liabilities for the city here, and I want to make that very clear, and people that say otherwise are incorrect. First of all, unlawful contract is no contract at all. CBS and Clear Channel will receive no... CBS and Clear Channel will receive no benefits from the invalidation of the settlement agreements. They're entitled to nothing. At most parties to non-deals are put back to status quo ante.
Thank you.
Restoration.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, Phil, followed by Will Wright, followed by Cindy Sterrett.
Council members, thank you. I represent Summit Media. I think for years, people have suggested that the city should have a fair and balanced policy on digital signs, one that allows all the companies to equally participate in this technology, but makes sure that neighborhood rights are preserved. It also reduces the total number of signs in this town and generates revenue for the city. But unfortunately, the settlement agreements have made that impossible. They have required you to give a monopoly to two companies only to do digital signs and to put them up wherever and whenever they want. They've required only minimal sign reductions and not a penny of revenue to the city. Thanks to Summit, however, we are on the verge of eliminating the settlement agreements. The court will likely rule in 90 days that they are illegal. That will create the kind of clean slate, fresh piece of paper, that will allow the city to go forward and develop a fair policy. And in light of this, we think it would be a mistake to create a working group whose makeup and conditions are aimed at essentially preserving the settlement agreements.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Phil, Will Wright, Cindy Sterrett, Mort Allen.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Will Wright. I work for the American Institute of Architects. We're here today to formally request that we be placed on this working group, and I have a couple of points to make here. When it comes to the economy of this city, there is no stronger indication of a strong economy than a beautiful city. And so we really need to broker, what is the most beautiful city we can have, and develop policy that guarantees that functionality and beauty take precedence. So with that said, AIA Los Angeles would like to be on this working group, and we also think this working group could be a little more informed if we wait until we decide or hear what the courts decide. So thank you.
Good to see you again, Will. Okay, Cindy, where are you? Mort Allen, Mort, Mort, come on down. Rick Robinson. Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. I'm Cindy Sterrett, here on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. The substantive issues here are, will the council take action to reduce existing signs and to move forward to modernize Los Angeles with the digital signs that are critical to our entertainment industry, which, as you discussed this morning, is a critical part of Los Angeles, and also helpful to public safety, as shown in the recent Carmageddon public service announcement campaigns? In 2006, the city attorney told you that the settlement agreements were a legal way to achieve those goals. What Summit is trying to do and what this lawsuit is all about is putting limits on the ability of the council to settle litigation. That's why they want to go forward with the oral argument. What we are focusing on is, in the last four years since you adopted an ICO in December of 2008, other cities have adopted ordinances with criteria for digital signs and establishing public benefits. We'd like to participate in that process. We believe that could lead to such criteria and public benefits being applied to the existing signs, and we ask you to adopt the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mort Allen, Rick Robinson, Melissa Richardson-Banks, please come forward. Yes, Mort.
A bit of history. In 1999, Hal Berenson formed the Ad Hoc Billboard Committee. I happen to have been co-chairman of it. I served on it with some very, with industry leaders in public people. For 50 years, I've represented landlords with billboards. There are about 10,000 property owners that are not being represented in any of this that are really, the city laws are against them. So I really suggest this committee, I'd like to be on it again to represent the property owners. We do need digital billboards. The problem is, they're all in the 5th district now. They've got to be spread around the city. It can be worked out. I think that the whole secret is putting the right people on this ad hoc committee, and I think that it's the only way to go right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Robinson. And then if I could get Dennis Hathaway to come up, you'll be after Ms. Banks or after Mr. Smith. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Rick Robinson. I'm an artist, small business owner, and community servant. I've lived and worked in the Arts District for the last 20 years. I speak in favor of this motion. Outdoor advertising is a critical partner to the city of LA. This motion represents a groundbreaking opportunity to create public participation and involve the product. Outdoor advertising is local, economically efficient, and relevant. The media really delivers a visual velocity to our city. It tells us what's new, what movies are out there, what fashion's happening, where we buy, where we shop, get health care, where community events happen. I urge the council to pass this motion. Set a new standard for our future in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please come forward.
I'm Melissa Richardson-Banks, and I'm a small business owner and a longtime resident of downtown Los Angeles. And I'm here today representing not only my firm, Cause Connect, but also a community events, actually several community events that I, that have utilized outdoor advertising to a great success, one being Bloom Fest LA in the Arts District and Plaza de la Raza, the Feria de la Familia, which is in, around the member Reyes's district. But I can assure you that my experience with outdoor displays, particularly the digital signs, which have proven to be a solution of doing more with less and the ability to draw an audience, has been critical to my nonprofit clients and to the community. We have seen, in fact, this past July, the billboards, the digital billboard usage significantly increased the community participation in our free community event in the Arts District, going from 1,000 people up to 30,000 participants at this festival. So the use of the digital signs is actually an important solution, and I ask for your support today of the motion to convene this working group and to help provide a new framework for outdoor advertising such as digital billboards. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, come on, Dennis, I mean, yeah, Dennis Roberts-Smith, followed by Laine Lawson. Good morning.
Good morning, councilman. My name is Dennis Hathaway. I'm president of the Coalition to Ban Billboard Blight. The intent behind this motion is clear. It's to allow the billboard companies to keep the 100 digital billboards that are now operating and put an untold number of new ones in places where there are now very few or none. But if you go down this road, what will you tell the people in Hollywood and Venice and West LA who suffer from light trespassing into their homes at night? What will you tell the people in West LA who worked hard to create a village-type shopping street and then almost literally woke up one morning to find three full-size digital billboards at one intersection, creating a kind of mini Times Square? What will you tell your own transportation department, which said that a digital billboard forming the backdrop for a traffic signal is a hazard? Some of you on this floor said you regretted voting for the 2006 lawsuit settlement that allowed these billboards to be put up without any public notice or hearings. Please don't compound that mistake now. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, Robert. Laine Lawson and Doug Arsenault.
Yeah, good morning, board members. My name is Robert Smith. I'm with the Painters of LA Trades. And I'm here today to encourage you to support the Krikorian Reyes motion. The Painters of LA Trades District Council 36, we feel that through this motion, many public benefits can be created. Settling litigation is one part of this. Multiple cities throughout the county are benefiting financially from digital billboards and revenue, while Los Angeles gets nothing. Why should we pass up the chance to get tens of millions of dollars each year from digital billboards, many of which are already up, when that money could go for vital city services? Multiple cities have existing development agreements for signage, Culver City, Carson, Irwindale, et cetera, and Long Beach is looking at their own digital billboard ordinance right now. We need to explore whether these type of municipal agreements are applicable to the city of Los Angeles. This is why that the working group will be tasked to do.
Thanks, Robert. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Laine Lawson. Doug Arsenault, John Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to address the council today. My name is Laine Lawson. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Clear Channel Outdoor, Southern California Division. As you know, for many years, we've been working, the outdoor advertising industry has been seeking legislative solution for the outdoor advertising signage issues, including reducing the number of existing signs through modernization, improvement, and relocation. We believe that working together with the city and the stakeholders on a legislative solution is more preferable than having any other body to dictate city policy. The council has the opportunity to provide clarity and consistency not only to the industry and to the businesses, but to the community groups that rely on us by taking action on this motion. We recognize that this is the first step in a public process, and it doesn't create new policy, but it does create a working group that begins addressing the outstanding issues. However, it's a positive step in an effort that could potentially produce a number of billboards, reduce the number of billboards, and provide significant public benefits. We request that you support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, come on, Doug, followed by John Walsh, and then we have Leonard Baez. Yes, good to see you, Doug.
Good morning, council members. My name is Doug Arson, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, representing more than 370 businesses in the city that have created over 100,000 jobs. Businesses need clarity and consistency. The city council has a critical opportunity to provide that by acting today. A legislative solution to the digital billboard regulation will provide clarity for businesses and groups that rely on outdoor advertising to reach potential customers or that depend on income from leasing billboard space. Outdoor advertising can play a critical role in revitalizing and driving our economy at a time when it is desperately needed. By establishing a clear process for industry to work with the city to provide public benefits, the council can promote a better environment for both its residents and its businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I have Leonard, because it's my understanding Mr. Walsh is out of time. Leonard, followed by Ray Rivera, followed by, it looks like Ray Baker. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Leonard Baez, and I am here today representing Teamsters Local 986. The Teamsters have had a long and mutual beneficial working relationship with CBS Outdoor. I am here today to speak in favor of the motion before you to establish a working group to resolve the outdoor advertising issues across the city of Los Angeles. We believe the framework being proposed will allow interested parties to meet and discuss issues that have been unresolved for years. The process, we believe, can lead to a long-term resolution of these issues for mutual benefit involved. It is also important to us that this group be transparent and involve the interests of the city of Los Angeles. This motion does that and allows for the active involvement of city planning and the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. We need progress in many fronts in this city, and this is just one area that needs your support. We are asking for your support and yes vote on this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rivera, followed by Ray Baker of Lamar, Dan Silver, Mark Ryevick. Go right ahead.
My name is Ray Rivera. I represent the Labor's Local 724. The motion before you today sets out a template for success in resolving an issue that is long overdue. We have worked with CBS Outdoor for years, supported their work in the city of Los Angeles. They are a strong union supporter, and we believe this matter needs your support. Here is what this motion is asking for, the opportunity for interest parties to meet, discuss, and try to resolve some of the outstanding outdoor advertising issue facing the city of LA. There is nothing blinding in this motion. Anything this group achieves will at some point come back to the appropriate committees and to the full council for discussion and final resolution. Let's give all interested parties the opportunity to attempt and achieve a resolution to this matter that has been outstanding for years. Your affirmative vote today gives people the opportunity to sit down and make progress.
Thank you. Okay, is Mr. Baker or?
I'll forego my time.
You're going to yield your time? Come forward, sir. You, Dr. Silver?
No. And you? My name is Mark Ryevick, 453 Rialto Avenue, Venice, California. I'm president of the Venice Stakeholders Association. I'm also a former legislative analyst to this body in the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. I served with Mr. Kataniin many years ago. And I'm also, incidentally, a candidate for Council District 11, Mr. Rosendahl's seat. I am here this morning to oppose the motion to set up a working group of city staff to reach settlement in the Summit billboard case in exchange for dollars for the city's general fund. We are opposed to trading dollars for billboard blight. In the Summit case, the court threw out the outrageous secret settlement reached with other billboard companies by the council in 2006 that allowed over 800 conventional billboards to be replaced with digital billboards without any ability for neighborhoods to object. That was a win for the residents. Now we should let the appeals court decide the appeal. Neither the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst, where I formerly served.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, next speaker. Your time has expired, sir. Sir, your time's expired. Sergeant, if he's going to try to get to this place, he needs to understand the rules. Your time is up. Okay, identify yourself.
Dan Silver, resident of Hollywood. I'd like to offer one definition of prostitution, degrading oneself for money. Instead of using the favorable legal rulings to eliminate signs, this deal would turn those rulings on their head. Instead of getting your own fiscal house in order, you would seek to prostitute the city to the sign companies for a few dollars. You would prostitute the public spaces, the streets, the sidewalks, the views, the very beauty and character of this city to the sign companies. I've heard of fiscalization of land use, but this is the governmental equivalent of human trafficking. I condemn the weakness and mercenary venality of this motion and ask that it be stopped in its tracks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Daniel Lahoda, Barbara Brody, Lisa, are you going to speak? Come on. Get in line. Get in line. Okay, sir.
Hi, folks. My name is Daniel Lahoda. I'm a resident in the Arts District, and I own La La Gallery down there. I work with a number of street artists, muralists. And I was contacted back in April by one of the media companies, and they invited me to have my artists paint on billboards that they would put up as a public service to the community, as a place to showcase this artwork. I think it's a great step in the right direction to form a working group and develop policy where we can work with the industry, where we can share ideas and share the value of these spaces together. The fact that the industry is here today, what I keep hearing is the fact that people want to have conversations, people want to open that conversation again, and I think that's the right direction. It's been a decade since the street artists have kind of been embroiled in a lot of, you know, issues with the billboard industry and the city and everything like that. And much as we formed a working group for the mural ordinance, I think that that's appropriate at this point for the new billboard ordinance.
Thank you. So do we have Barbara Brody? Followed by Lisa, followed by Tim Fox. Yes, sir.
Barbara Brody, President, Westwood South of Santa Monica Boulevard Homeowners Association, member of the Board of Ban Billboard Blight. I'm here today to tell you that we strongly oppose your motion and this attempt to halt the wheels of justice from rendering a decision in the Summit case. This is an incredibly important decision, and one not just between the city and two billboard or three billboard companies. This is a matter of great public interest with huge impact on public policy, public health, the character of our neighborhoods, and the future of our city. This is a travesty. There has been inadequate notice to neighborhood councils and the community. You're starting off on a very bad foot. The community was so incensed with the settlements that we raised money and filed an amicus brief, friend of the court, in the Summit case. I bring each copy, each council member a copy gift wrap for you, and I sincerely hope you read it before you render a decision and attempt to rob us of our day in court on October 30th. Let the courts make their decision. There will be plenty of time for advisory groups and settlement discussions afterwards.
Thank you, thank you. Lisa Gritsner, Tim Fox.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning, council members. Lisa Gritsner, representing Van Wagner Communications. The proposal that you are considering today is premature and designed to circumvent the court proceedings, which have been underway for over four years. What is ironic is that we have been working for close to three years to encourage the council to address the digital disparity, the uneven playing field, rewarding companies that actually sued you, and punishing companies like Van Wagner, who chose to play by the rules, and who try to work cooperatively with the city rather than litigate. Unfortunately, what we have learned is that the city keeps choosing to reward certain players, picking winners and losers in the marketplace to the detriment of our neighborhoods. I urge you to reject this effort to short-circuit the appeals court and to wait for the judicial process before acting. If you must act today, I urge you to include all of the industry representatives.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Tim Fox.
My name is Tim Fox, and I represent CBS Outdoor. Thank you for your time on this matter. CBS Outdoor supports this motion as we believe this could create a revenue stream for the city that will benefit all the community. We respectfully request that you move forward with passage. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment on this item. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Krikorian, but before I do that, I just don't see a problem in having a conversation about a very challenging issue. And I know it's challenging, and I just want to commend Mr. Reyes and And I know it's challenging, and I just want to commend Mr. Reyes and Mr. Krikorian for having the courage to ensure that we have this conversation. And it is also my understanding that you want to include all of the companies. So I don't want to step on your speech, but I want you to know that I think that this is courageous. The people of this city elected us to do a job, and we must review this issue. So with that said, Mr. Reyes has the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and I thank you for those words. Colleagues, this is about inclusivity. This is about informed decisions. This is about understanding how the different stakeholders can participate in a process so we can do it in the light of day. We have learned some lessons in the past. I find ourselves in a place where, as we move forward, allow for us to engage all the different perspectives. We understand where people lie in the spectrum of this issue, and it's a very broad spectrum. On one end, you have folks that feel that should be that one billboard in the city. There's other folks that feel otherwise, given their environment. It's a diverse city. All we're asking is to form a group, and it'll be open to everyone, as hard as that's going to be, plow forward so that we could have legislation that reflects all these different perspectives. This industry, in the past, has been very, how can I put this? I quote one phrase that I heard 10 years ago. It's the Wild, Wild West. There's no real rules and regulations. It is an environment that has put us in legal paths that are still working its way through the process. In one instance, we had formed policy back in 2002, 2003. It was frozen in the courts. And in that particular case, the courts came back and put us right back to where we were at eight and 10 years that already passed. So colleagues, I want to thank Council Krikorian because we know this is not an easy issue, but we know we have a responsibility to be open to everyone. All this will do is ask for us to form a group. Every committee will be public. Every discussion will be public. There are no backroom deals. I know there's an environment being created now that says we're gonna do otherwise, but I ask you to allow us to create an environment of information, an environment of understanding, and to continue moving forward in a method that's gonna be clear, hopefully concise, and more importantly, comprehensive. I ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, obviously, this is an issue that inflames a lot of passion and excitement, for whatever reason. And I think partly as a result of that, the city's history in trying to address the complex issues that surround outdoor advertising, the First Amendment issues, the land use and planning issues, the budgetary issues, the quality of life issues that impact neighbors. The city's history in grappling with those issues has not been a model of policy development for the long-term best interests of the city. It's been one that's been riddled with litigation, with a variety of different approaches that have been taken and moved forward or not moved forward. And the point of our moving forward today is not to try to jam through the ultimate solution to these complex issues. It is to have a healthy dialogue about what is in the best long-term interests of the city. And if the result of these discussions is a proposal that is not in the best long-term interests of the city, then I for one will not support it, and I'm confident that my colleagues will not support it. Whatever comes out of these discussions will have a full public hearing in the Budget and Finance Committee. It will have a full public hearing in the Plum Committee, and it will have a full hearing and a debate here in this council. So when I hear some of the comments that I heard during public comment, as offensive as some of them were, I understand where they're coming from. They're coming from that history of frayed nerves, of having to fight over every last issue in this discussion. I get it. And so, in keeping with what the intention was of introducing this and creating a healthy and productive dialogue, I do have a few suggestions for how we can achieve the kind of inclusive approach that Mr. Reyes talked about, that some of the, almost all of the public speakers talked about, actually, to ensure that it's crystal clear that this is simply a first step forward in trying to have a resolution that will be in the best interests of the city. And in my view, the best interests of the city involves at least three components: reduction in the number of billboards in our city, revenues to our city and the neighborhoods that are impacted by billboards, and resolution. Finally, some finality for our business community, finality for our residents and our community organizations in knowing what is and isn't allowed, what will be and won't be built. I think those are three essential elements of this policy that we need to try to get at. So this is a step in the direction of approaching those three goals. And in order to do that, I would like to offer a few amendments to the motion that's before you. First of all, the working group concept seems to have created a good deal of consternation among folks, who will be invited, who won't be invited, that sort of thing. So what I would propose is that rather than doing a working group model, we simply call upon our staff to have a report back after reaching out to the appropriate stakeholders, gathering input and reporting back, as we do in so many other issues. And that will allow us, as the policymakers, to begin that process of discussion based on staff's recommendations. So I would propose that we amend item number 10 to strike the first two sentences of the first moving clause and replace it with the following language. I don't know if this language has been distributed to all of you, so I'll simply read it out loud. It would read, "I therefore move that the City Council instruct the Planning Department and the Chief Legislative Analyst to immediately begin working to resolve potential legal disputes with billboard advertising companies that have settlement agreements with the city through a framework providing public benefits to the city in connection with digital signs and reducing the number of signs in the city. Within 30 days, the Planning Department and the Chief Legislative Analyst are to provide the Budget and Finance Committee with draft legislation and draft binding agreements that would address digital sign issues and extinguish the city's potential liabilities in relation to the settlement agreements." So, no working group, report back from staff. But in addition to that, I'd like to add some additional clauses, which are encompassed in part in substitute motion 10, or in motion 10A that's before you, which would, so I would further move that we append the following to the motion that's before you, the following paragraphs. "I further move that upon the completion of city staff's consideration, the Chief Legislative Analyst work with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment to provide a notification to all of the city's neighborhood councils of any legislation or agreements proposed by staff. I further move that no legislation or agreement proposed by city staff shall become binding unless they have been heard in both the Planning and Land Use Management and the Budget and Finance Committees. I further move that no legislation or agreement proposed by city staff shall become binding unless they have been considered and approved in a regular meeting of the council and should not be scheduled as an item on a special agenda." So with that, colleagues, I think we have, in a very belts and suspenders kind of way, ensured that what we're going to do is start a dialogue that will feature a report back from our staff after doing outreach to all of the stakeholders about what our range of options are so we can make the informed decisions that Mr. Reyes talked about. We will have full opportunity for input from every single one of the 95 neighborhood councils in this city, and we'll have a full hearing in not one but two policy committees before it comes back to council. So I think we've gone, with these amendments, to a great extent, we've gone about as far as you can go in ensuring the maximum amount of public input, public participation, participation by all of the stakeholders, to achieve a policy that will achieve those objectives: reduction of billboards, revenues to the city and to our communities, final resolution once and for all of the issues that are surrounding outdoor advertising. So with that, I would ask for your eye vote.
Okay, Mr. Labange.
Very quickly, members, I just wanted to read the last paragraph of Mr. Rosendahl's letter, which talks about not doing this as we do this right now. I share that with Mr. Rosendahl. Everybody's my friend out there some days, some days they're not. But I don't think when you go this direction, you make this sign, sometimes it doesn't work. Paul, if the motion came in that way, I wouldn't be hit with people coming from all over the last 24 hours with concerns about this process. But I think it's necessary. I would suggest, too, where's the fellow from the AIA? He's out looking for signs.
Will is gone, I think.
Will's gone. But add the AIA if you're gonna add anybody, too. Add the neighborhoods. Add the area planning people. But I don't feel comfortable, and I don't feel comfortable because our city attorney's handcuffed a little bit on this here, too. So that's how I feel. I just wanted to make that for the record, and I thank everybody's efforts here, but I always remember the Jay Giles Band: Sign, Sign, Everywhere a Sign.
Alakon. Mr. Alakon.
Council members, I think, I'm gonna present a different perspective here. And that perspective is that my district, the Northeast San Fernando Valley, and I think it's like many of the other districts in the city, have been held hostage by a court process and by a specific community that has specific concerns that are very different than the concerns I have about billboards in my district. And I absolutely believe that if we had done this five years ago, I could have negotiated hundreds of blighting signs out of my district. And we constantly pussyfoot around the issues and not deal with the issues, and having people sit down and talk about it, notwithstanding the issues in court, I can't see what's wrong with that. How does that violate democracy to have people sitting around the table talking about solving a problem? But we've been held hostage to these lawsuits, and everybody says, "Let's wait till the court gets resolved." Well, I've been waiting since 2007 for resolution on just this issue, when I could have eliminated hundreds of signs that are blighting Pacoima and Panorama City and Sunland Tahunga. We could have gotten rid of all of those signs. I have a community in Panorama City that wants digital billboards. They want us to create a sign district where they could have digital billboards because they think it'll liven up their opportunities on the retail corridor in Panorama City. Instead, they have ugly signs. So I don't think we should be held hostage to a particular part of the city. I'm all for minority rights. I wouldn't be here if it weren't for that. But when it comes to ignoring the needs of 90% of the city because we're taking care of the needs of 10% of the city, that's just wrong. This working group should have happened five years ago, and I'm not gonna wait another day for it to happen. I agree on the issues of, was there a public hearing? Should we do it? Yeah, it should be done in the full light of day. But essentially, what we're doing here is creating a working group to give us some recommendations, and if we don't like them, we throw them out. And if those decisions, those recommendations, aren't conducive to the needs of my district, I'll vote against them. But to not have the discussion, that is squashing democracy, not the reverse.
Richard, well said. Emotional. You go, boy. Mr. Caretz, can you tap that?
I don't think so, except with a rare historic correction to Mr. Labange. I think that song was by the Five Man Electrical Band.
Well, you're, hey, so you're right, and you did tap Labange. Okay.
As far as the issue at hand, my constituents feel completely overrun by digital billboards. The fifth district, I believe, is overrun by them. Our neighborhoods hate them. I constantly get complaints about digital billboards flashing in people's living rooms. Neighborhood groups hate them. They're officially on board in opposition, and in no way could I represent my district by doing anything other than saying no. Anything that we're looking at doing is with an eye towards allowing digital billboards. In my district, everyone is opposed, so I will cast a no vote and ask my colleagues for a no vote.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. Mr. Parks.
Thank you. You know, one thing, I thought we were going in the right direction with the task force because in my community, they also have been held hostage by a smaller group of the city because what my community has are illegal signage and also billboards that are 100 years old. They are not offended by the newer electronic boards, but they can't get access to it. What I was hopeful today when we saw the task force, that we would not just notify the neighborhood council or DUN about the process, but we'd actually include members of the seven alliances that are identified on the webpage of the DUN website, and include their membership as part of this discussion and roundtable because there are a variety of views on billboards that differ from not only block to block, but neighborhood to neighborhood. And everyone is not offended by the newer boards. We've got a great deal of input and activity in my district when we had the Grim Sleeper, the billboard company, put out signage. It kept the community aware of the reward, a variety of things that we could not do on the older boards. I'd also ask, on a friendly amendment, that on paragraph three of 10A, that the E and N committee also be included if we're truly trying to bring community input. And I think it's a step backwards to remove the task force by saying a staff report is gonna be done, which then sends a message to the community that it's an exclusive process without the community because staff will write something and bring them a product versus allowing the community to sit down and discuss it.
Second, Mr.?
Second by Ms. Perry. Okay.
Mr. President, the friendly amendment, is that accepted by the maker of the motion?
To the microphone, please.
Motion was to include E and N in the third paragraph, but if we are going to eliminate the task force and not allow members of the alliances and the neighborhood councils to participate as part of paragraph two and just notify the neighborhood council, then it makes me vote against it. So the issue is, we'd like to have E and N because we believe that the neighborhood councils, if we're truly looking for community input, should be part of the review in paragraph three, but it's a step backward, in my judgment, to go to eliminate the task force and not include the alliances.
The maker of the motion, Mr. Krikorian?
Well, I don't, the alliances will all have an opportunity to participate fully through the committee process and through the outreach that staff would do before they report back. So I wouldn't have an objection to a hearing in E and N, but, Mr. Parks, if you're voting no on it because of the concept of stepping back from the working group, then there's not much point in accepting that as a friendly amendment.
The thing is, I'd like to bring up, if you listen to the neighborhood councils, they do not believe they get their voices heard in the policy committees. So if they're just being notified and asked to come, then it would just be business as usual.
Okay, so if I could see if that could be worked out to friendly, and we'll vote on it later if you continue the discussion, that'd be good. Before I introduce the next speaker, Mr. Wilkinson's here. Mr. Wilkinson, go over to the ropes. Mr. Joe Buscaino's deputy will speak with you. Thank you. He had a comment on a card and a matter already taking place. Mr. Cardis.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's unfortunate that the press seems to be getting much of this discussion and purpose wrong, and also some of the people who came to public comment on this matter seem to falsely claim that we're doing an end run on the court process. Nowhere in this motion does it say that we're instructing the city attorney to abandon the processes going through the courts. Nothing of, no language, no instruction from this council is actually saying that. So it's really unfortunate that people seem to be wanting to say that, and hopefully the press won't wrongfully... the press won't wrongfully repeat that that's what's going on because nothing could be further from the truth. Let's just look at the facts of the matter, the black and white language of this motion, the amendment, as Councilmember Kocorian just pointed out. Councilmember Kocorian, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask for some clarification of your amendment to your motion. As you read, it says, "Resolve potential legal disputes with billboard advertising companies that have settlement agreements with the city." Does that mean that billboard companies that don't fall in that category, that they won't have input and/or effort of dialogue with the CLA and the planning department, et cetera, to report back to us?
No, Mr. Cardness, thank you for the point. And as you can see from looking around the room, we have many lawyers, many representatives of all of the companies who are here present in the room. They'll have every opportunity to participate fully in this discussion, as they have today, and also in the process of outreach that I would expect staff would do prior to bringing back any recommendation before this body.
So, for the record, if you don't mind, if we could work on clarifying that language so that it's, like I'm trying to point out to everybody in black and white, the input and/or information that will be received by our staff to report to the council, that they can participate in forwarding that information and dialoguing in that process before it gets to the report to us?
If there's language that you'd like to propose to do that, I'm happy to answer. I think it's very clear from the fact that we're having at least two full public hearings in policy committee and before this council, as well as a staff report that is going to include outreach to all of the stakeholders. I can't imagine what more we could really add to make it any more clear.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to add a little bit more to make it a little bit more clear, especially with what I've been pointing out, the misinformation that's being given out there and the accusations that are toward this council of trying to thwart the court process, which is not true, and also trying to make it seem like we are not allowing participation by parties who want to participate, et cetera. So, if we could do that, I think there's plenty of speakers on the queue, and I think we have a few moments.
We've got a lot of speakers. Thank you, Mr. Cardness, Mr. Kocorian. Next, Mr. Zine from the Third District.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. I've got two digitals in my district. They have never been a problem. I've never received complaints on them. Is the city attorney's representative here on this particular matter? Anyone from the city attorney's office here?
No, Mr. Zine. I'm representing the city's attorney's office.
Okay. What's the city attorney's position on this, on this working group that's trying to be established?
The council has full authority to legislate in this area.
I understand that, but the city attorney's involved in litigation. Does the city attorney have any concern about this affecting litigation?
This should be seen as a separate track from --
So, this does not affect the litigation. I think we've discussed that. This does not affect the litigation that's taking place. Mr. Kocorian, could you answer that? The litigation that's underway, this does not, this working group that you're trying to establish does not affect --
First of all, with our amendments, there would be no working group, but nothing in this motion, working group or not, has a direct impact on the process of the litigation. It's a discussion of policy options that would be put before the council before there could be any impact. If the result of that, after public input and after decision by this council that the proposals were in the long-term best interest of the city, the council would have the option of reaching a settlement that could obviate the need for continued litigation, but that certainly is not necessary. We might also find that it would be in the best interests of our city to continue to litigate and to pursue other remedies. So, there's absolutely nothing in this motion that suggests an outcome. The only thing there is here is the beginning of a discussion of what the policy options are.
So, it's not designed to undermine what is currently taking place?
Not in the slightest. It's designed to allow this council to consider what its options are, what its legal positions are, what the strength of its legal positions are, what the policy options that we might choose among are based on whatever leverage we may have now, whatever leverage we may have after the Court of Appeal acts, and which one is greater. All of those things are on the table for consideration and discussion, and we should be making those decisions in a sober and informed way.
And I would invite Mr. Hathaway to be a member of that, along with neighborhood council folks and other people who are interested in it. The other question I have, and there's no question, the Fifth District has a number of digital billboards. There's any question regarding that, and I've seen it as I've traveled through that district. Would it be appropriate to make a friendly amendment that you would have something on the West Side for the convenience of the folks on the West Side that were impacted greater than people in other parts of the city, that they could have one of the meetings where the folks come together at the West Los Angeles Municipal Building or someplace close, so the folks there who have a great concern can have more convenience than coming down to City Hall? Would that be appropriate?
Well, and again, these are suggestions that are more directed towards the concept of the working group, I think, which were, in light of the public comment today and some of the concern about the working group, were taken out of this proposal to make it simply a staff report to council. If, upon receiving that staff report, if you feel that it would be appropriate to do something in addition to our normal processes to gather neighborhood-specific input, I'd be happy to entertain that. I think the council would be happy to entertain that, but that's not actually before us now because there is no working group that would be going out and doing that.
But in the event, obviously, they have more interest than other parts of the city. The folks of the San Fernando Valley, to my interest, have not shown any interest in this at all, as far as the limited number that we have. But in the event that they ask that, and there are some folks here from the West Side to show respect for that, you would not be opposed to having something on the West Side.
I would expect, for example, that Mr. Caretz, or Mr. Rosendahl, or others, might want to have town halls on the issue in their districts. I would expect that we would, I mean, we do things like that all the time.
We can use the signs to advertise the meetings. Now, push the button if you want to go again. Next speaker, Mr. Englander.
Probably that'd be a good idea.
That's right, Mr. Englander.
I just wanted to weigh in on this and say, this has been going on for far, far too long. We've got this issue, when we had the billboard reduction ordinance back, and I think it was 2008 originally, and the idea that we would go out and count all of the boards and have an inventory, and then have a billboard reduction in place where we allowed larger sheets to go up in exchange for the smaller sheets, never truly materialized and got stuck in the muck. It got stuck in court as well as in this building. And then we've settled and come up with, and we're really, I think, sold a bill of goods on cutting the first deal on the digital boards, and never followed through on the revenue side of that and what it was going to produce for the city of Los Angeles. What we're talking about right now that's left on the table at the end of the day is getting neighbors and neighborhood councils and businesses and communities involved to talk about what they'd rather see in their district, whether they're the digital boards to attract businesses and communities that want them, like Mr. Alarcon talked about, or it's the revenue coming back to the city, and maybe there's a revenue-sharing agreement that comes back to those communities that are impacted or affected. There's all kinds of options on the end of the table. But right now, since nothing's happened, we've received none of that revenue. And we have the impacts, and we have all the small boards, and there's been truly no reduction in place. I support the idea of a working group and being inclusive with all the board companies and the stakeholders and the community as well, but we've got to move forward and resolve this. If we, in fact, collected the money they're talking about on the table right now that's being proposed, if we started collecting that revenue five years ago when this deal should have been done, that would have been enough collectively right now to solve at least one year of the budget deficit of where we're at today. And so, I urge everybody to vote for this, to keep moving forward on this, and come up with a conclusion that works for all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I actually like the idea of a working group. I think it's very strategic, and I think it's a good way to work through this thorny issue. But I just want to know, maybe the city attorney can give me some advice or some input. What downside, or is there some problem with putting, engaging the neighborhood council component as part of this working group process? Is there some issue with that? Does it pose a conflict?
No. The creation of a working group by city council would turn it into a Brown Act body. And so, council could get the same thing done by giving instruction to planning and CLA, to give them a task to do, seek out input from various sectors, and then come back, draft a report, report back to these various council committees.
So, you're basically talking about six in one hand, half dozen in the other, noticing working group meetings versus having a more traditional process where you just go through a process and then you have a staff report written up. I'm not sure what the difference is, and why, what's the downside to including neighborhood councils as part of this process? Is there a legal reason why we can't do that?
No. There's no legal reason. I believe the intent of Mr. Kocorian's amendment on the floor was to engage these outside groups and to efficiently have city staff gather this information, craft it into a report, and report back to the various policy committees.
The policy committees include, I'm not really clear, does it include education in neighborhoods now? Or, so, if we do it this way and we don't have a working group, are you saying that you will include education in neighborhoods?
No, I'm happy to include education in neighborhoods. If, I mean, it's actually the president's decision, but I would be happy to have a hearing in education in neighborhoods. And, I was just speaking with Mr. Parks a moment ago, I would be happy to include in our amendments, a specific instruction that the CLA draw input from the seven neighborhood council alliances as well, and receive their comments on any proposals.
That's a good thing.
So, I'd be happy to include that. The whole point of eliminating the working group was to enable us to draw this kind of input without having to create an invitation list. Because once you start creating the invitation list for the working group, somebody out here is going to have a problem with somebody that was included or not included. And so, to avoid that problem, let's just create it as an expansive, inclusive effort to draw as much public input as we can, including the seven alliances, including other impacted companies, whoever wants to provide that kind of input that's consistent with what we're trying to achieve.
Let me just say this. Either way we go with this, and I don't know which way we're going to go with this, you know, notice can be given, you can have a working group in a chamber, and everybody can sit at the table, and people can observe, and so, you know, it can be done either way. But it's six in one, like I said, six in one hand, half dozen in the other.
Mr. Weeza.
Thank you. I hope I'm not getting into too much semantics here, but if we're asking for both legislation and a new binding agreement from the working group, what's the difference? And if it's only recommendations, wouldn't they come back with just recommendations on legislation and not necessarily binding agreement? Or why would we need to ask them to come back with binding agreements?
Can I ask somebody that, makers of the motion?
Well, the express language, of course, provides that nothing would be binding until there's a final action by the council after this extensive public hearing that we've talked about. I think the idea of that was to just emphasize the need for finality and resolution. I think that may be a semantical point, but the idea is not just another thing that's going to create additional litigation and additional discussions and additional problems, but let's create something that's going to be enforceable and resolve the legal concerns once and for all.
Okay, so it's just, I mean, we don't know what may come back. They may come back with just legislation, proposed new legislation.
They might, or they might come back with a proposed agreement. None of it would have any legal weight whatsoever until this council acts.
And that's what your amendment, your amending motion today does, make sure it goes through Plum and Budget and Finance, and no waiving out of committees. We'll have full hearings before it gets to council.
Exactly right.
Thanks.
Mr. Reyes, for a second time. Ed, is Ed around? Well, in fact, we'll go to, oh, here he is, Mr. Reyes.
Council President, as Councilman Kocorian was giving his presentation, I got a call from Councilman Bill Rosendahl, and he asked me to state and be very specific and acknowledge Mr. Hathaway, Dennis Hathaway's presence in the council chamber, and I understand why. Bill has been, Councilman Rosendahl, as you know, he's getting ready for, well, he's fighting for his life, but he's still concerned about the issues at hand. Colleagues, this discussion is a healthy discussion. I never felt this body should be doing policy by press. We should not be reacting to how environments are created because you have so many different interest groups out there. You have an army of lobbyists, a whole army of companies, and you've got very, very concerned citizens that need to be heard. All we're asking for is feedback, a report, as amended on the floor, a report from our departments, to go through a process that allows them to be as inclusive as possible as they come to a place where they can provide a report that reflects all the interests that we heard today. We need to make informed decisions. As Chair of Plum, I am tired of piecemealing this issue. We cannot be reacting to every different court case and in the process leave a city in shambles. It is time we do come together. I expect the different departments to address the concerns of Councilman Parks. We should have the neighborhood councils involved in that dialogue with our departments. We should have the homeowners involved with our departments. We should have the companies involved with our departments. Every sector of this community should be involved. But we are a very diverse city. What is ailing in Councilman Alarcon's district is distinct from Councilman Caretz's district for obvious reasons. So, give us the opportunity to make informed decisions. Let's provide the capacity for our departments to work with every interest group so we, as legislators, can make informed decisions. That is all we're asking. There's no backroom deal, there's no hidden agenda. It is insulting the way I get asked questions as if there is a done deal, and that is wrong. So, the fact is, out of courtesy of Bill Rosendahl, I'm recognizing Mr. Hathaway. I understand your perspective, but I find others who would probably have a healthy discussion with you for four hours. But the issue is, we need to make informed decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Cardness.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Kocorian, and bear with me, I know it might seem a bit redundant, but once again, there's just so much going on and so much misinformation. There's nothing wrong with double clarifying. On the amendment that you read and distributed to us, it reads, "Billboard advertising companies that have settlement agreements with the city," and then if we could please add, "and outdoor advertising companies through a framework providing public benefits to the city," et cetera. So, those, one, two, three, four, five words, "and other outdoor advertising companies." Is that okay?
Friendly.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Kocorian, to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for actually a really good, productive, substantive discussion. It's good when we can have discussion about policy and really get into the nuts and bolts of it. I just wanted to comment, first of all, I was really moved by Mr. Alarcon's comments, as I think many of us were, which shows sometimes why there is great division in this city that makes it difficult for us to grapple with some of these policy issues. And I just want to point out, there was an anonymous email that was sent out filled with lots of misinformation about this motion, but one thing was really notable that it said. When it talked about requiring takedown of billboards in exchange for digital billboards, this was the comment in that email. It said, "We know how local PALS spin this one." PALS, P-O-L-S, by the way, Politico's. "They forced the billboard companies to remove several tiny boards in undesirable industrial corners of our city in exchange for erecting huge digital jumbotron's in light commercial and residential neighborhoods west of downtown." And then the PALS claimed victory that they reduced And then the Pauls claimed victory that they reduced the number of billboards around town. Well, if that's the kind of sentiment that we're dealing with, then, you know, I think none of us should be a party to accommodating that kind of attitude towards this policy. But the problem is that every time we try to take on a complex, difficult, legally challenging issue like this that is hard, we sometimes step back from the brink and don't act because we hear the clamor from folks who write anonymous emails like this trying to divide our city further. Let's not let that happen. Let's not let that happen today. Let's continue with the dialogue that we've been having for all of these years, but try to bring it to a successful and productive close that will be in the best interest of our entire city, that will produce revenues to the city, that will produce revenues to our communities for beautification, for sidewalk repair, for all of the elimination of blight that our constituents regularly talk to us about, real blight, the real things that our constituents are complaining about to us that we don't have the revenues to take care of. Let's try to have a resolution that reduces the number of billboards around our city, increases our revenues, and finally, brings resolution to this very difficult issue. And we can do it in a way that is open and transparent and inclusive of every stakeholder who you heard from today, and that's what's before you today with the amendments that I've proposed. So, for clarification, again, Mr. Labange, there will be no working group, there will be a report from staff that comes back after outreach to all of the stakeholders, including at Mr. Parks's request, which I very much agree with, specifically, outreach into the seven neighborhood council alliances. There will be a full policy committee hearing in Budget and Finance, and Plum, and Education in Neighborhoods before it comes back here for a full, another full discussion here in council. And so, with that, I would ask, with those amendments, the amendments proposed by Mr. Cardness and the amendments that I read earlier, I would ask for your eye vote. Also, one final, sorry, technical correction, in the part that I read earlier on the first sentence of the first moving clause, there is another reference to working group that should just be replaced by staff. And with that, I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian, and that was well said. And members, we don't want to be accused of inaction, so I really, again, want to commend Mr. Kukorian and Mr. Reyes for having the courage to deal with something that we've had on the table for five-plus years. And I think that's the kind of council we want to be. We might be accused of a lot of things, but inaction, maybe that won't be one of the things. Madam Clerk, before we prepare to vote, did you need a clarification on an amendment or something?
Yes, just for the record, wanted to clarify, Mr. Parks's motion, is he withdrawing that motion in light of Mr. Kukorian's?
And he is, so with that said, let us prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there other business before this committee? This council, I mean.
Council has motions for posting referral.
They are posted and referred?
That clears it up.
Announcements, members? If everyone in the council chambers could please rise for adjourning motions, if everyone could please rise. Mr. Hathaway, you and your group, if you guys could please rise. Ms. Pearman, we're getting ready to adjourn. Everybody, rise for adjourning motions. And if we could keep it quiet, Mr. Alarcon.
I'm not going to provide an adjourning motion today, but I do want to notify you that Maury Weiner, a former deputy mayor of Los Angeles, passed away. I'll be providing the adjourning motion tomorrow. Maury was one of Mayor Bradley's first deputy mayors, but he went on to serve in the recovery community in a variety of ventures. He was a very good man who was involved in many, many different issues, and I hope to be able to say that, but I thought those of you who knew Maury would want to know of his passing.
And you're going to adjourn tomorrow? Mr. Garcetti?
Briefly, on that, I'll save my words for tomorrow, too. I spoke at his memorial service, and he's a dear friend. I was very surprised the Los Angeles Times didn't even have an obituary for him, so I've talked to the L.A. Times, and hopefully, they will write the history of somebody who had such a huge imprint as Tom Bradley's campaign manager, as deputy mayor, and as a great Angelino, but I'll save my words for tomorrow.
Okay, other adjourning motions, Mr. Labange.
Members, here's someone who lived a beautiful life, Emma L. Schlessinger, who passed away just recently here with her family at her bedside. She was born in the Washington, D.C. area, graduated from George Washington University, and met her husband in class. They fell in love, and it lasted 71 years, their marriage. What a wonderful life they lived. Emma was an unwavering devotion to her three sons, whether it was sitting them at the piano bench, taking them to swimming lessons, helping them with their homework, serving as a Cub Scout leader. She was a great mom who really inspired her sons. She demonstrated her love to many ways, including letting, letter-writing to her husband while serving in the Army Corps during World War II. Her sons and her grandchildren in weekly preparation for Friday night dinners for over 50 years. And was committed to many causes in various organizations. She enjoyed many trips with her husband Julius, traveled throughout Europe and throughout Mexico. She survived by her husband Julius, her sons Louis, George, and Joe, and many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I ask for adjourned in memory of Emma L. Schlessinger.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I'd ask for adjourned in memory of Billy Bill Mitchell, who was born in September 1943, passed away October 4th, 2012. Bill was a cosmetologist who created his own line of hair products called From B.L. Mitch With Love. In addition to being a great cosmetologist, he also was a pastor, gained the name of bishop to his friends and community, was a great role model, lived the example as a Christian life. He is survived by his wife Candy and his daughter Tina, son William, and his blended family of Kealan, Triselle, and Latisha. I'm sorry, Latasha. The funeral services will be held Wednesday, October 17th, 1:00 p.m. at The Word of God Baptist Church located at 4816 Southwestern Los Angeles.
Other adjourning motions, members? Not on this, okay, we are adjourned.